Park City Council Regular Meeting. Is there anybody here to lead us in invocation? All right.
I believe I saw Pastor Jackson in the audience. If you would, please, thank you.
Heavenly Father, we come to you right now in the name of the Lord. We praise you and we thank you, Lord. Many decisions that need to be made in this nation, in this country, in this city. And so we're addressing you. You tell us to come boldly to the throne of grace where we may find grace and help in time of need. We're asking you, Lord God, to put your mighty hand upon our police department in the divine protection as they go out and serving to protect one another in this city. We're asking you, looking up on the school district, Lord God, as the teachers are ministering to our children, Lord God, that they may grow up to be great citizens of this United States of America. We're asking you, Father God, to break the power of drugs that go forth in this city and with our youth, Lord God, or call it a Trojan horse, to come and to deceive and to tear down. But we're calling upon you, Father God. We're asking you, Lord God, to look at the homeless situation that is like a pandemic that is going about, Father God. See, there are many things that we need to deal with, Lord God, and we're asking you for your divine direction. You said to seek you and we'll find you. There's many plans in a man's heart, but only that that you have established will stand, and that's what we want you for what you have established here in Baldwin Park. Bring unity, one another. Bring unity in the schools. Bring unity in the homes. Bring unity on the jobs, Lord. We need you in your direction. In the name of the Lord, we pray. Amen.
And at this moment, I'll ask our CEO, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you for that. City Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Daniel Damian.
So at this moment, I will make a motion to excuse Councilmember Damian. Can I get a second? Any objections? No. City Clerk, please continue.
Thank you. Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Protema Alejandra Avila.
Here.
Mayor Emanuel Estrada.
Here.
And Treasurer Marie Contreras.
Great. Thank you for that. City Attorney, at this point in time, is there anything to report out of closed session?
Nothing to report out right now, Mayor. I believe we also will be going back in a little bit later.
Right. Thank you for that. And then, of course, announcements. The City Council are also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority and Finance Authority, which are concurrently convening with the City Council this evening. And each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting and $50 for attending the Finance Authority meeting. And at this moment, we can move over to presentations, and I believe we have Brian Wong and Grant Power from the San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council staff. We appreciate this time to hopefully show you a number of affordable housing solutions that we hope to partner with you on to reduce the amount of problems we have in this area in regards to affordable housing. So I just wanted to start by explaining that San Gabriel Valley Habitat for Humanity has been around in this area for about 30 years. We basically build quality, affordable housing in the area. We also renovate and repair homes for existing homeowners. So our idea, our goal is to provide safe housing for all people. In addition to this, as we're bringing homeownership opportunities, we're doing this for the long term, and we believe that the only way that homeowners are going to be successful is if they have some financial literacy behind them, some stability. We do not put people into houses that should not be into houses. We want people to succeed and not to fail. In 30 years, we've never had to foreclose on a home or take it back for any reason. Currently, as you're well aware, we have completed two properties in which we purchased on the open market that were market rate housing and converted them to affordable housing. Those houses will stay affordable for the next 30-plus years. In addition to that, we're currently working on a development with you for another 12 units that will hopefully change a neighborhood. It'll be an anchor for further development in that region. The population that we typically work with, our homeowners, is the sweet spot for your average residents in the city of Baldwin Park. So all the things that we do fit perfectly with the programs that you currently work with. So I just quickly wanted to go over five of the type of projects that we're normally working with. New home constructions, whether they be single-family residences or multiple homes on a lot, like a condo project. We also, as I mentioned, do acquisition rehabs where we take existing homes in existing neighborhoods, repair them, bring them, modernize them, and also sell those as affordable housing. Something that is relatively new are accessory dwelling units or ADUs. Now, these are basically what we all know as granny flats, converted garages, and so forth. This is something that is a little bit newer, and there's a number of legislative pieces that will hopefully clear the road for this at a point in time in the future. But we have already completed one in the city of Pasadena, so we're comfortable with those as well. The next item, which is the home rehab repair. Basically, this is a program that is really important for a number of communities that have older housing stock or residents who have lived in their houses for long periods of time and perhaps no longer can afford to fix them up. Or there's a number of code violations that they just can't afford to pay for. So by partnering with you, we can go through and make them safer, weatherize them, make them more energy efficient, a wide variety of projects. And the whole goal of this, of course, is to keep people in their homes so they don't have to move out. And the last item that I really want to talk about is targeted area improvements. And this is kind of like a giant block party. So if you pick a particular area that you want to do some major work on, not just one house, not maybe two houses, but an entire block, for example, where you can bring in the community as a whole. Perhaps you renovate one or two houses, beautify a number of other houses. This is something where we can bring in hundreds of volunteers, and this becomes a very large city event that we can really do an immediate impact on a concentrated area. So again, on the new construction, I just want to kind of run through each of these really quick. This is a house that we built in Pasadena. And really, what I want people to notice is that is an affordable house, and that is what an affordable house should look like. It should not stick out in any way. All of our houses are built to blend into the neighborhood. New homes can absolutely be an anchor that renews entire neighborhoods. So there's additional benefits to new housing other than putting a single family into a house. Acquisition rehab, as I mentioned. Here's an example also of one of the properties in Baldwin Park that we addressed, which we just pretty much stripped it down, modernized it, and took a house that was a market rate house and will now be affordable for the next 30 years, 35 years on this particular house. And the upside about the renovation is it keeps the neighborhood completely intact. I mean, there's no change. You don't drive by and say, oh, look, there's a brand-new house that's being built. Drive by and say, wow, there's a house that's looking really nice, but it clearly fits in that neighborhood. The ADUs, as I mentioned, they're typically very small in size, you know, 500 square feet. They're detached from the main house. They're typically a way to bring on new affordable rental units. And typically, they are brought on to lots that have significant land. And the owner of the main house is also the owner of the ADU and therefore a landlord as well. But as I mentioned, there's a number of laws pending that I think will further define the best way to use that particular housing unit. Here's an example of the home repairs that I was talking about. They can range from garage doors. This particular house had a very elderly woman, and she just couldn't even use the garage anymore because it was just unusable for her. Her windows were leaking. Weatherization was absolutely horrible. So we were able to come in in one weekend and basically change her life. And these are the things that could be done very quickly and have a dramatic impact on the lives of the people who are living in those homes. Here's a quick snapshot of basically one block that we were working on and one crew that came in. This particular crew, they're in orange because they were sponsored by Home Depot. One of the great things about these type of community projects is that large groups, large employers in the area love to be involved, love to get their employees in some type of a community project. And this is something that everybody gets behind. So what I tried to do here is just to quickly give a matrix of the different types of programs we went over, what the average costs are and what the timeframes are. Now, you know, for a new construction or an acquisition, you know, it's about $500,000. The reason that we are so successful is we layer finance on top of finance. So we're not asking any one particular group to come up with a lot. The key to what Habitat does is we don't give handouts. We give handups. Meaning that people who buy houses, whether it's new construction or acquisitions, they have a mortgage. They're paying. It's just at a rate that is affordable. And that's the key, because our goal is to bring people up through financial responsible finances. But as you can see, even the difference between new construction and rehab, you know, new construction can be anywhere from one to three years. To do an acquisition rehab is maybe two to six months. So the cost may be the same, but the turnaround time is very different. The impact on the particular neighborhood in which you're doing this is very different. So, you know, there's no right answer as to where or how you want to do things. The ADUs are taking about a year. Our generalized costs at this point in time are about $120,000, so that's a rental unit for about that. Different areas have different restrictions on it for how they want to do that. Then the next one is the rehab. And this really, even though this is saying $7,000 to $25,000, really, this can go to $7,000 to $40,000 plus. I mean, this is all really based on what you, as a city, want to do and what you want to target. You know, our goal is to help you remedy the problems that you're seeing. So if you're seeing a lot of problems that are substantial, then we'll go in and attack them. Our projects go anywhere from one day to 30 days. Again, we have licensed contractors. They come out, they take a look at the problem, they assess it. They determine how much it's going to be, what needs to be done. Or we will work with your court code enforcement if that's the case. You tell us what needs to be done. But again, this is the whole goal of keeping people in their houses and making it safer for them. The last item that I have here is the community-wide improvement. And this is basically, again, these are large projects. They take six months to a year to really set up correctly, to get all the community partners involved that you want to. And we go in and just, over a weekend, blitzkrieg a particular block, a particular area. And it is dramatic, the type of effect that we can have. So as you can see, this is pretty much wherever you want to go. You can be hitting, you know, the singles or the home runs. You can get stuff done every day, or you can wait three years. Or you can do a mix and match. There's no one way to solve the affordable housing problem. But I just want to make sure that everybody is aware, there are a variety of tools at your disposal, depending on what you want to see and what your priorities are. And our job as your partner is to help you get there. Do you have any questions for me, by chance?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. Well, I don't have any questions. I know that Habitat for Humanity is a wonderful organization, great partner for the city. And I look forward to that continued partnership. We were talking in closed session about bringing back a kind of like a study session so that we could really prioritize because it just sounds like the menu is great. The question is, how do we prioritize? So I think that we will look forward to having that conversation in the near future with you and with our Community Development Director, Ben.
Fantastic. Thank you. Yeah. Councilmember Hernandez.
Great. Again, thank you very much for being here. Good to see you again. You know, looking forward to, you know, having a long-term relationship again. I know we have one, but I know it's a new one with you, considering you just started back in January. You know, looking for the rehab part. Of course, the new construction is a big part that I'm very interested. You know, the ADU part, you know, that's something worth having a longer discussion. I don't think we, as a city, have a policy as to how that can be made and so forth. But certainly looking for, you know, great opportunities to bring you in and, more importantly, build that equity, you know, that the homeowners get, right? And I do apologize if you mentioned or did not mention. I must have not heard. I was reading something that you have here. The part in which, you know, you encourage actually people to, you know, move out out of the homes that they bought, right, after, you know, five or seven years and so forth. So if you can speak to that, if you haven't already, that'd be, that's a great opportunity because, again, that goes back to the revolving door, a positive revolving door of getting new first-time homebuyers, you know, back into a new property. And more importantly, for them to be able to build equity and get out of the rental circle, per se.
No, thank you. Thank you for that opportunity. You know, our philosophy is we're not here to create a lottery in which out of the hundreds, if not thousands, of people who want a house, you get one winner. And they're the winner, you know, and they take all of the advantages of the house, move out in five years, and then it's back to a market rate, and the community loses as a whole. Our goal is to make sure that all of the families move in. One, have some financial literacy to make sure they know what it takes to be a good homeowner. But more importantly, we've structured our program such that when they're buying a house, they all enter into a resale agreement with us, which gives us the first rider refusal to buy the property back at the price that we sold it. And the reason we do this is by keeping a low sales price on it, we can guarantee that that house is going to stay affordable for generations. And at the same time, the families that are purchasing the home are building equity in the property. They have an opportunity that they would never have otherwise. So for example, if you're renting and you're just making things meet, you're paying $2,000 a month for rent, for example, which is not unheard of. Instead of having that $2,000 just go away, basically, that $2,000 is becoming equity into your property. So $24,000 a year, it's like a savings account for you. So if you were to save in that house just for five years, I mean, you can see where this is. So now you have a down payment for $120,000 that you can take, go out into the market, build your own equity, and you have the financial stability to go out and do this. So at the same time that those families are setting themselves up and their families up forever, we're also giving new families an opportunity that they wouldn't have had before. So our goal is to keep that going as much as we can. And we've also had some programs and discussions on how to incentivize homeowners from even moving out faster by giving them additional money to make it beneficial for them to go. Because honestly, housing stock gets really difficult to acquire at an affordable rate. But every time I get to repurchase that house back, we're selling it back out at our cost. So this is what's really going to keep the affordable housing in the neighborhood. And it's just, I mean, I don't know that it really needs to be said. Housing prices today are just absolutely insane. Unless somebody gives you a hand up and you're on your own, you have a family, it's going to be tough. It's going to be tough to save for that down payment.
Thank you. I just want to thank you for being here. I'm really excited about making homeownership affordable. That's the key. And like you said, there are people are investing in rent, getting nothing in return. Somebody else is making money off of it. But with the homeownership, they're actually saving money. Can you explain how is it that they get affordable housing, what interest rate you charge in order for them to be affordable?
Sure. You know, one thing that's kind of interesting is, you know, we limit the amount of their principal interest taxes and insurance, their payment, their mortgage payment, to 33% of their income. For most people, for a lot of people, this is less than what they pay for rent. So in addition to them building this equity, they're actually paying less on a monthly basis. And that's very exciting. The interest, we have partnerships with commercial lenders that are charging very low interest rates at 2%. In addition to this, and I don't mean to get wonky, but there's no mortgage insurance. So, I mean, we're really reducing these costs down as far as we possibly can. Habitat also has loans that are at 0% as well. So, you know, our function is not only to use the lower interest rates, as you had mentioned, but we layer a number of different types of grants from the state, from the federal government, and from local areas till we can get to a point in which that amount that they pay is never more than a third of their income. So some people get more grants than others because that's what they need. We're here to make it serve as many families as possible. Some need more help than others. But as long as we have these grants at our disposal, and it's all, like I said, these are federal grants. They're almost all specifically set aside for housing. So it's not like you're taking away from lease or fire or something of that nature. They are set aside for this. And we leverage them. We leverage them as much as we possibly can. We stretch those dollars because every dollar we stretch means I'm going to be able to help another family somewhere else.
Yeah. Of course, I want to start off by thanking you for coming, you know, as, you know, I've been a big fan of what you guys do, and I've I fail to hide my excitement every time I see you guys, right? So, so I know, and, you know, Mayor Protem brought up the good questions, you know, sometimes, you know, these people are paying a mortgage and it's cheaper than rent. And so if you don't mind, I'd like you to go back to the picture of that house. Mark? So I'm pretty sure that's one of the houses at the Pasadena location, right? So can you kind of explain to the, I wish you had more pictures. Can you kind of, can you kind of explain to staff and our council, of course, to the people that are here today, you know, where that is and, you know, how, the average family, how much are they making to be able to live there?
Yes. This house that you're taking a look at is a house in Pasadena under the Colorado Street Bridge. It's called the Desiderio area. And that particular house, it's a three-bedroom house. And the family that just purchased that, we just recently, we sold it, earned under $65,000. Actually, they earn about $58,000 to be more accurate. Now, they own that house. That house, we have to have it appraised for the grants that we do, appraised for $1.2 million. We sold it for $400,000, $417,000. The reason we were able to do that was the family that owned it before moved out and sold it back to us for that price. So the family before lived in it for a couple of years, for about four years, built up enough equity, moved out of state closer to their family, and basically were able to buy the house of their dreams in Idaho where their family was, and it was the best thing going for them. I mean, they basically bought their house for cash for what they sold this back to us for. So this is the perfect example of what I'm talking about, where everybody has goals on what they want to do. We have other families that I'm sure will never move. That's okay, too. But the options are there for them on what they want to do. So the family that purchased this had two small kids, was in a situation in which every six months, they were fearing that they were going to get evicted, pushed out because rents were going insane. Every day was a struggle for them to figure out how to pay for rent and live in an area that they felt safe in, honestly. So this is the type of families that we're looking to help. And there's no other way in the world that a family making that amount of money is going to afford a house like that. And we will continue to do this every day that we can.
And that's great. So at market rate, it's 1.2 million to live there. Under Habitat for Humanity and the Affordable Homeownership Program, it's 400,000, right? And we talk about a $65,000 median income. It's what we have here. So I think the Realtors Association did a study, and they said, you know, to comfortably afford a home, you need to make $110,000. So it's interesting, right, because it's not just helping somebody gain homeownership. I think there's a lot of, a lot of positive side effects. You've kind of found a way to create some sort of inclusionary housing where now people are living in, and, you know, they're able to live in nicer areas, they're able to be together with a diverse community. And I like the idea of these homes, you know, sometimes we talk about a first-time homebuyers programs or some sort of assistance and, you know, at market rate, and then once the time lapses, they're able to sell it, and it just becomes market rate again. But this, you've found a way to make the most out of that dollar and stretch it out and give as many families an opportunity to gain homeownership, save up, and then gain complete independence from that relief and buy a potentially bigger or nicer house because they've been able to save that. So, like I said, I'm very excited to have you guys here. I'm glad you came. I'm glad you shared this information with us. I look forward to all the possibilities. And I did want to, I know, I think Manny's here, so, and I know that we're having a walk on August 7th, and there's booths available. So I think it would be really great if you guys were willing and able to come out and you can start explaining to the community what kind of programs are, you know, your offer and how they can sign up whenever there's an opportunity here in our city.
Absolutely. Absolutely. We look forward to it. There's one more thing, if I can say it really quick. You know, there's a misconception of what we do, that affordable housing is for homeless, for people who are coming off the streets. That is not what we do. Each one of our homeowners pays a mortgage. These are all working-class people. They all have jobs. They are They are all members of the community looking to better their lives and their family's lives. This is not a handout program or anything else like this. So, as a matter of fact, we actually have minimum income levels as well because we want to make sure that whoever's in the property is going to be successful. We need to make sure that they have the stability to make sure they pay their mortgages and along with all of their other bills. So, we are pulling in very stable people into these programs. These people, the families that move into these houses help to build communities because they're here to set roots. So, I just want to make sure that there is an understanding this wasn't any type of a homeless program or anything else like that. These are all working-class families that qualify for mortgage or else, but just the amount they would need, bottom line.
And that's a great point that you made. And we had a conversation about how hard it is for young families to be able to afford to purchase a home because, first of all, the down payment is unheard of. It's very difficult. So, you are giving an opportunity to a young family, let's say like the mayor, their young family, to be able to purchase a home that would take them years to save up for that down payment. And I think that's a great opportunity because I see that happening a lot. A lot of young families, you know, both people are working, yet they can't afford that down payment. They have great credit. They show the possibility, they show that they're moving forward, but that down payment is killing them. So, being able to get them into that home because they are responsible, they have good credit, I think that's the best that we could do for our youth right now because they're getting discouraged. They're having to live with their family, with their parents, and they want to have their own home. So, I love the opportunity that we're giving the young families. So, thank you. I really appreciate you being here.
That was the one thing I didn't mention, was our down payments are typically 1% or about $5,000 or $5,500. So, I think everybody would agree that's fairly affordable.
Great. And so, I know you used me as an example, Mayor Protem, but just for the record and before anybody flips the words around, I'm not getting an opportunity out of this, okay?
I just used your example because you're a young family.
So, but, you know, like I said, you know, very excited to have these opportunities and, you know, to be able to work with you. And I really hope we get a lot done. I think, you know, there's chances, there's opportunities, and we have to take an aggressive approach to fixing this housing solution. I don't know if any other council members have any questions, comments? If not, thank you. Thank you, Brian, and thank you, Brian, for being here today. We really appreciate it. I'm really looking forward to you showing up to our first event.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you, Council. We look forward to working with all of you. And together, we can tackle this problem and hopefully put a big dent in it. Thank you. Have a great night.
Great. So, at this moment, I will open Public Communications. City Clerk, who is looking to speak?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, Sean Bodnia.
Esteemed Mr. Mayor, members of City Council, staff, my name is Sean Bodnia, and I'm a resident of Metro Village next door. I moved there two years ago from Lake Elsinore, where I rented a house. The house was quiet. It was a... Coming here from there, coming to Baldwin Park from Lake Elsinore was a big step for me because instead of being alone in solitude on the quiet street away from everybody, I have the opportunity to have a location, amenities, and community. So, the location, people, my friends, people I know, ask me, Sean, sir, where do you live? I tell them Baldwin Park. Where's that? I tell them that it's the hub of the San Gabriel Valley. We're conveniently located between the 1060 to 21051. So, wherever my friends are, they can get here quick. And and that's good, location, location, location. Second, my apartment building has the amenities of a workout room, a computer room. We also have a big area where you can throw parties inside. And and it's important that we have these other things, like children's playground, because now children can play in the children's area inside the apartment instead of playing out on the street like Elsinore. So, it's a lot safer for the community and community. I came to this apartment, and I met, the first person I met was Nikalia Richards. She's the community... Any help? Sorry, the community director of the apartment building. And I got into the apartment. I'm on Section 8. I do, I have Social Security and SSI because I have a disability. And I'm really happy where I live. I've been there two years. And I know that if the city had another set of apartments that has the same kind of community and access and location, I think we'd be a lot better off. I think we'll let him share.
Thank you. Karina Garza.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Karina Garza. I moved in this apartment in 2016. I moved to the United States six years ago. In the first year, I was living in a room with my sister. That wasn't very safety for us. We were sleeping at night, and electricity was sparking at night when everything was off. And I was thinking about quitting school and work more hours just to get a better place to live since my sister was almost done with her major. And then, we got lucky. We got the last apartment of this community, and I was able to finish my school. Now, I graduate from University of LaBerna. And once I graduate, I started looking for better opportunities because I was working in retail at that time. And now, I'm working for a very company. And I was looking for rents. Maybe I could move to a bigger place, and I saw everything was very expensive. And I just want to thank this, thanks this community because I've been able to save more money and planning a better future for me. I already reapplied to school. I'm coming back to school since I'm able to work just 40 hours and be able to pay my rent and be able to concentrate, have time to study for my new major. I don't have any kids, but I enjoy every time my niece come. And I have a safety place where I can play with her on the playground. I don't know. I just want to thank this community. I want to thank Nikilia because she has been helping me and always tell me what other programs can help me to keep moving up and just to have like a very place or better ways to save money and just invest it in things that are worth it. That's it.
Thank you. Steven Imami.
Hello, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and Council. Thank you for allowing us the opportunity to speak here tonight. I'm with Rome Development. We're an affordable housing developer throughout California. We've been in business for 40 years now. Over 25 of those years, we've been focusing primarily on 100% affordable housing for families and seniors. We build a beautiful, high-quality affordable housing product. One example is here, right in Baldwin Park at the Metro Village. And I've come with some community members that live there and others that live in the neighborhood that just want to share their stories. And as you could hear just from the first two, it's pretty amazing the impact it has on individuals, whether it's homeownership that's wonderful, but, you know, rent is a stepping stone. And it's, for a lot of people, it's a blessing, and it's part of our community. It's part of the fabric of our community, having a blend of apartments, homeownership, neighborhoods. When you work along with the city and the community and taxpayer dollars and spend so many years creating these zoning locations, precise plans and whatnot to allow for housing, it's a lot of time invested. And we've certainly been following the process, and we're excited about proposing 125 affordable units ranging from the 30% average median income to 50% average median income. And I'll explain what that means. LA County has a very high average median income. For a family of four, that would be about $118,000. For a family earning 30%, that's about $35,000 a year for a family of four. What that equates to, in the building we proposed, in the affordable community we're proposing to the city, we had a mix, a heavy mix of two and three and some one-bedrooms as well. But we're adamant about having a lot of two- and three-bedrooms for families. There's a lot of single parents that have the need for a second bedroom, a third bedroom. And in this proposal, we would be offering rent at $634 for a one-bedroom, $760 for a two-bedroom, $878 for a three-bedroom. And that's families earning anywhere from $35,000 to $59,000 max. This is deed restricted by the State of California for 55 years. And you can extend that far beyond. You can extend that into perpetuity. We've done that before where cities have voiced concern about, you know, for whatever reason, a developer would come 55 years. I won't be here from now. But 55 years from now, let's say, you wanted to turn it back into market rate and make a, you know, a goldmine killing or whatever. It would be a 55-year-old building that would need a lot of TLC at that point. So, what happens is every 15 years, you come along and you do a rehab. And in doing that, you apply for state tax credits again, and then you extend the life of the affordability.
Sorry, your time is up.
Steven, 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 I just want to ask you a question. Were you here at the last meeting?
I was not. I was, I was not here. No, I was on Zoom or watching it online.
Okay. And then that was the meeting when your item was on the agenda, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah. And I reached out to you. 10 emails, I never got a response. I would love to have a conversation with you.
There was no 10 emails, but thank you. You can sit down.
Oh, okay. I'll reforward them to you. I have all of the plans.
But your time is up. Please. Next speaker.
Kevin McDaniel.
Good evening to you all. Good evening, Mayor. Again, I live right behind here at the Metro Village Apartments. And I'm very appreciative to the city for having an apartment building like that. I was priced out of Pasadena. I came from Pasadena about four years ago. And my rent continued to go to upwards to almost $2,700 for a two-bedroom. And I was able to find a place here for not even less than half of that so I could supply housing for my wife and my two children. But like he mentioned, you know, adding the affordable housing is a plus for every community. One of the main reasons is, you know, we can have more residents here and you can, you know, continue to keep your tax dollars here and provide a safe and loving environment. I really appreciate being right here by the train here in the heart of the city in Baldwin Park. I used to drive by this place all the time and never stopped. But since I've been a resident here, I see all the benefits that the city has provided for the residents here. And I'm no longer in Pasadena. I'm doing everything that I can do here to stay. And affordable housing that you guys are providing, that you guys help support helps the community as a whole. And my daughter just graduated from school here last year. And, you know, she's at Dominguez Hills now. But this is a great place to be. And I really hope that you guys continue to invest in community improvements like the Metro Village Apartments. That's all I have to say. I really appreciate your time. Enjoy your evening.
Thank you. Jasmine Cisneros.
Hello. I just wanted to say that I have been a resident here my whole life. I am 22 years old. My parents have rented, a low-income family. My dad has been in and out of the hospital my whole life. And I can honestly say that affordable housing is one of the best things that could happen to this community, having friends that have been through similar situations. I've seen their families struggle as well. I think this would be something great to add to our community. And it would be an additional positive change to the city. And I hope that it does go through because I would love to one day see my mom have her own home and be able to call it hers and own it on paper and everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine Lozier.
Hi, good evening, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Protem, council members, community partners, and fellow community members. I'm the manager of the Baldwin Park Library, and I have three updates for you tonight. First is the LA County Library is partnering with the Department of Public Health for pop-up vaccine sites at select libraries throughout LA County. It launched today at the Willow Book Library. Unfortunately, Baldwin Park Library won't be one of the sites, but about three miles from here, nine minutes, it will take place at the Sunkist Library on August 4th from 1:00 to 3:00. Baldwin Park Library is also partnering with COR, which stands for Community Organized Relief Effort for pop-up COVID testing on Thursdays and Saturdays from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Walk-ups are welcome. You get your results in 72 hours. And that information, other locations, other days of the week can be found at covid19la county.gov/testing. And then, thirdly, I just wanted to mention that the LA County Library has extended our public service hours for Baldwin Park. We're now open on Tuesdays from 12:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. On Wednesdays through Saturdays, we're now open 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. And for those who are still reluctant to come into a building, we offer sidewalk service on demand as needed throughout the day. And our digital library is available always, 24/7. And you can see more at our website at la county library.gov or, excuse me, dot org. You can give us a call at 626-962-6947, or you can stop in and see me at the library. Thank you all so much.
Catherine, is this the first time I think we see you here, correct?
It's the first time I've been since you've been here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, very nice to finally see you in our chambers.
Yes, sir.
Looking forward to seeing you every meeting.
I'll be here.
Thank you. Princess McCain.
Good evening. Thank you for hearing us all about affordable housing. I am a full-time digital marketing manager at Nuclear Blast Records. And affordable housing is something that I'm extremely passionate about. I grew up pretty much in poverty. I had a single mom taking care of three kids. I first learned what the word eviction meant at nine years old. I think affordable housing will benefit families so much like my mom, who struggled paying the bills. Every year, we would get evicted. So, I know what it's like for us to be homeless and worrying about how we're going to get bills paid, how we're going to stay in our home. I think because of the current minimum wage of $15 an hour, there is a huge gap between minimum wage and housing. There's not enough affordable housing in California. They say the recommended spending rate for your rent should be 30% of your paycheck. But so many people are stuck at $15 an hour. The average cost of rent is $1,400. It doesn't add up. I think that if we had more people in affordable housing, we can tackle the issue of homelessness and the mental health crisis as well because a lot of people, especially during the pandemic, became super depressed. A lot of people lost their jobs. I think if we were to move forward with this, that a lot of people would, it would impact a lot of people positively. And I think, you know, I just don't think another nine-year-old child should learn what the word eviction means or what it's like to live on the streets or struggle or what it's like to know when we're going to get our next meal. I hope that you can take into consideration to go through with the project. And I hope that my story can inspire you to continue. my story can inspire you to continue building more affordable housing units for families that can benefit from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Arturo R. Luna.
Hello, City Council, Baldwin Park residents. You know, you people hand us this agenda, or we collect it when we come in. First thing, you opened up the city council meeting like if it was nothing. The pastor came out, said his thing, nobody, you know, it was like, oh, big deal, the guy's talking. Is that how you guys treat all your people that come here? You know, it's a wonder we even stood up and pledged allegiance to our flag. What's the matter with you people? You become dictators? You do as you please? Disrespect everybody? Do whatever comes convenient? All the years I've been coming, except for maybe two times, that Treasury person has never given a monthly or a quarter report on if the city's falling apart, or staying in the red, blue, black, green, or whatever. How do you people expect people to respect you when they see you on the street? You know what? You don't care. The lawyer don't care. The mayor, you're a new mayor. You're supposed to be able to run and direct and make people want to come to these meetings. You don't care. You don't, the less people here, the better you people feel. I can't understand how you people work. How many of you visited the city of Baldwin Park since you've been in office? And I don't mean where I live at or where he lives at. I mean the whole city. None of you probably don't even know where some of the places are in this city, and if you do, we're maybe lucky. I'll tell you one thing, the lawyer knows where to come every Wednesday that you guys have a meeting or a special meeting. You had in a meeting this morning, or before our regular meeting, the financial report, you people, oh, read it, sign it, turn it in, we're done. It doesn't tell us people out here, if you're falling apart, or you were in debt, or we're being sued, nothing. She tells us nothing, not a goddamn thing. And you people stand up there saying, oh, it's good. Don't you people understand? You work for 85,000 people, maybe even more. You don't work for that person, that person, that one. It seems like we work for the lawyer more than the city council. He makes more money than the whole city, probably. Don't you think you ought to correct things?
Mr. Luna, your time is up.
That's what we put you up there for. Correct the city's wrong.
Your time is up.
Thank you very much.
Greg Tuttle. Greg Tuttle.
Council members, I gave you all a two-sheet piece of paper for the Brown Act. You cannot require us to fill out cards. We fought this since '07. Stop this. We want to come up and speak. We have the right to come up and speak. I do agree with one of the council people I talked to that you want to know if there's a person that needs help or needs something done with city, that you want to be able to have their name and address and phone number, and I agree with that. But to come up with free people that want to come up and speak and they come later in the meeting to talk, there's no reason that we need to fill cards out. There's no law that says we have to do that, and the Brown Act says that there. You have it in plain sight. Now then, I gave the city manager a copy of email addresses from Tofoya when he was campaigning for Monica Garcia. I also gave him a flyer that Mr. Garcia, or Mr. Tofoya used with the city emblem on it, which is illegal, and he's campaigning for Monica Garcia. And he was, you know, you can get the bronze level at $1,000, silver, silver level 1,500, gold level 2,500. This is raised up by your city attorney, who's collecting money from all the attorney firms that he gives carte blanche to, to go out and charge the city all the monies to do court cases, and we're sitting there paying for all this stuff. Why is he doing campaign fundraising for Monica Garcia? This is not right, and I would like an investigation done by an independent firm to see what we can do with the city attorney on this. He should be disbarred from this. The other thing is, Monica Garcia has a thing on here at the end of the night. She wants to talk about Rome again. We lost our ass with Rome the first time. They didn't pay for the property. They didn't pay for infrastructure. They didn't pay for plans. They didn't pay for any of the stuff that was promised that they'd give back to the city. And then what they did was, they says, well, when we get, make a profit, we're going to pay back to the city. Well, if you look, they've never paid back because they claimed it as a nonprofit. They turned it into a nonprofit organization, management company. But now the reason that Monica wants to turn this back up in Rome, FPI, Management Company. You know how much money they donated to Monica for her senate race and council race? $9,400. She owes. She's what we call the political prostitute. She takes money and she uses it for her own benefit and for her, to get people jobs in here, and this has to stop. It's just like the city attorney. He's in here for the money. He's in here to, the city attorney, all the attorneys are getting paid to come in here and overcharge our city for all the money that they go in with these lawsuits, and he's in there telling them, buy the plan and you get the money, you get in. It's wrong.
John Rios.
Good evening. I gave you a piece of the state, thing for outside vendors, for street vendors and everything. I gave everybody a copy of it. Read it, so you can understand that they have to have license, they have to have a health department, health. I didn't give you the one for the county. The county is a little more stricter than what you guys believe too. You already have vendors and a copy of everything that you guys have on your books, you know, for street vendors and everything. Another thing is that you guys trying to make it easy for the street vendors. You can't. I did my studies on it. I even follow a couple of them. They have better places than you do, better places than I do. And you guys, oh, we can't charge in taxes. We can't give a ticket. Read the article from the state. You have to have a health department card, okay? That's enough for that. Mrs. Garcia, I got here David Olivos, $12,800. Ripley, $9,800. Royal Coach is $12,000. Olivia's attorney, $4,400. Albright Firm, $14,800. Jimmy Gutierrez, $1,000. And, you know, it's, it's a kind of, it's out in the open, things that you have to look at. You know, we have other people that had borrowed money from the city and they never paid it back, and it's been around five years since a gentleman passed away. It's something that, just new CEO, should look into it, and if you want the name, we can give you the name, not in front of everybody. You know, I don't want to embarrass nobody.
Thank you. Your time is up. Daniela Ramirez.
Hi. Thank you.
Go ahead.
So earlier, we were speaking on the topic of affordable housing. Well, I live in one of those, the apartment right next door, the apartments, I should say. I don't know how many of you have worked retail or spoken to like people like me, like us, you know? A lot of them, when they hear how much my family pays a month, they don't believe me because it's cheap. All these people live in small housings, crowded into a room, crowded into a house, multiple family units, like these. Best thing that's happened. I've never had a room, 20 years of my life, my own room, never. I shared it with two other boys, my brothers. My parents would sleep either in the living room, or when we lived in a garage, we slept in the living room. And honestly, I don't think that should be an appropriate living situation for anyone. People outside the city are in the same predicament. Rent is pretty much becoming way out of reach, just like housing. Okay, if you can afford the mortgage, but you can't afford the down payment, so you're stuck paying the rising rent, you know? So I really hope you guys would look into ways to help more of the community. There's so many people out there who would like their own home, per se, instead of sharing it with a completely different family. Who knows when they'll move out and then a new family will come in, you know? So please take that, keep that in mind, and help everyone out. Thank you.
Thank you. Fergie. Or Fergie.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Fergie, and I moved to Baldwin Park from Anovia. I want to say, as homeless, I did not have a home. I was living in my mom's home temporarily. As you may know, leases don't allow people to just move in. I had to right away find my way out. Metro Village came as a saving light to my two boys and myself when it first opened. I wouldn't be able to put food on my kids' food, call them nonetheless. I have this as provided a great opportunity to not only myself, but everybody in those apartment complexes. As I saw earlier, I would love to own a home. At that time, that was completely out of reach. As a single mom, not able to do that. Maybe if you speak to me now, that's something I could potentially, possibly look into. There's more people than just myself in that same situation, or different situations that need an expansion that is needed, and regardless of the miscommunication that's been going on for the couple months or years, I'm not sure, think of out there that need the housing that will benefit from this. That's all we ask.
Thank you. Anna Tofoya.
Hi, Mark. We need the, Yuvia, we need the interpreter to come on to the English channel, please.
The interpreter is ready.
Thank you, Yuvia.
Even in my English is not perfect, but I want to. Hello, good evening. My name is Anna Tofoya. I've been a Baldwin Park resident for the past 20 years. I also live here in Metro Village. I raise two of my children here, and we have been attending community meetings where they've been talking about, you know, planning around housing for low-income families. And when my veteran husband passed away, I never thought that I would depend on this type of services. Adelante. So I, again, just wanted to thank the city for this type of projects. I was lucky enough to be admitted to one of them when I was first attending this meeting, so I was very lucky. And I do have a special ed kid, so this has been of great help, and so I would encourage the city to continue this type of planning. This is a very beautiful city. I raised my children here, so once again, I just want to say thank you for this opportunity and thank the city because we need this type of projects to live in. Thank you.
Mayor, those are all the speaker cards that we received. You might want to invite others in the public who might want to speak.
Yes, if you don't have a speaker card and you'd like to speak, you can, you can come up now.
Good evening. My name is Alicia, and I'm a resident here at Metro Village as well. Affordable housing has brought for me hope. I was a mother at 18. My mother used to be a drug addict. I went from home to home, never had my own place. While I lived with my kids, everything was great at first, and then there was a lot of abuse, verbal, physical, and I for a moment lost hope. I lived in South LA. I felt stuck. When I heard about Metro Village and the opportunity that I would be given, I was elated. I've been able to go back to school, and one day speaking it into existence, I will also be a homeowner thanks to everyone here that has allowed the affordable living available to people that need it. Thank you. Thank you.
Great. Is there anybody else looking to speak?
Hello, council members, members of the community, uh, my name is Sergio Quintana. Um, I'm an area supervisor with FBI. Um, and I oversee a portfolio of five Rome properties. Um, I've been in property management for 15 years. Um, and since I've come on to FBI and I've started managing Rome properties, um, it's been a wonderful experience for me, honestly. Um, I can't tell you the countless number of stories that I've experienced myself. Um, when people move into these communities and they're able to have their own home. I've had multiple people literally break down and cry. Um, because they've come from dire situations. Um, and these types of communities have allowed them to have stable housing, be in a safe environment. Um, and, and live a better life overall. Um, so I, I would, you know, urge you to, to consider the, the new project. Um, I think it would be a great addition to Baldwin Park. Um, and, um, that, that's pretty much all I have to say, but I, I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Is there anybody else looking to make a public comment? Not at this moment, I will close, close public communication. Regarding all of your comments, this council is, uh, invested in changing the ability to attain housing here in our city. Uh, this is a topic that, uh, Councilmember Garcia also brought up, and it'll be at the end of the agenda. So I think it'll be most appropriate if we, uh, discuss this issue once we get to that point.
Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. Um, well, first of all, I want to thank everyone who came out to speak this evening. Um, it was very nice to hear how this project, the Metro Village, has impacted your life. Um, how it's improved your life, how it's given you, uh, perhaps the leg up so that you can attain homeownership one day. And I'm so glad that you're part of our community and that you're enjoying our community. Uh, whether you lived here for 20 years or whether you moved here a couple of years ago. And so I just want to say, uh, yes, we will take up the item at later in the agenda. But I want to say that, yes, I, I was one of the supporters of Rome Metro Village. And for the reasons that you all stated today. Because I, I really believed that this project could provide quality of life for families, uh, for seniors, and for individuals who, you know, perhaps are newly in, in, in the workforce and just need that opportunity. Uh, you know, we heard it from single moms, and so that was why I supported this project. It's a beautiful project, and I'm, I'm looking forward to talking about the, the other items, uh, Phase Two and Phase Three, uh, later on, on the agenda, but let me just talk about this Metro Village. When it was approved and completed, there were a thousand applications that we received, that were received uh, from interested applicants. And I believe there are about 70 units. And so that really speaks to the need for this type of housing. And hearing your stories and really bringing, bringing that to life for me, you know, it, it does, it, it takes me back to the beginning of the process, and it's almost a full circle for me. Because those are the reasons why I supported that project. Um, you know, again, for quality of life, for people to, to benefit in the ways that you have benefited. And so it really does, um, make me very happy to know that this has been a, a real uh, benefit to your lives. And so, um, I just wanted to mention that. I've been a council member for 14 years, so I don't even remember when we started Metro Village. It was probably back in like 2009 or 10 or something like that. But, um, I'm, anyway, I'm so glad that you're part of our community today. And as far as some of the comments that were made about, you know, the list of donations and contributions. Uh, Mr. Rios did say, "Everything is out in the open." Yeah, that's right. It is out in the open. Why? Because I follow state law. Because I have followed the law and I have reported when somebody has supported my campaign. Doesn't mean anything, it just means that people support me, and that's it. Secondly, I'm proud to have supported Metro Village and projects like that in my community. Uh, and it, it means nothing as far as any contributions. Um, so I just wanted to state that for the record. It is out in the open, and again, it's because it's compliant and it's legal with state law. That's all.
All right, uh, please keep it down, there's no clapping here. Mr. Mayor. Uh, hold on, so, so this is going to be one warning to everybody. We're not going to do what we did last week, okay? So, at this point, this is the warning to everybody. You disrupt city council meetings, you will be asked to leave. So, um, it seems that, uh, Councilmember Garcia just kind of started the topic, so if we want to take on this topic, I, I believe now is the time. Thank, thank you. Um, first and foremost, uh, thank you and welcome to the city of Baldwin Park. Um, you know, it's, some of you have been here for, for a couple of years now, but at least allow me to, to, to welcome you to our city. Um, and two, to also thank you for, for taking an active voice, um, in the participation of, you know, of, of our civic duty. Uh, you know, this is the progress in, in which, you know, you have a voice. Uh, you know, your voices, your, carries stories. Uh, you know, I'm deeply touched by, you know, the, the young woman who talked about having her own room finally. Uh, you know, I applaud that. Um, I understand, I've, I've known those stories from other folks. Um, the single mothers, uh, that are now on a pathway, um, towards success. Uh, this is great. These are the stories that we want, these are the projects that we want for our city, regardless of the, of the developer. Uh, this is something that we want to encourage and we continue to encourage. You know, we talked about homeownership earlier with Habitat for Humanity. That's one type of product, one type of great organization. And there are many great organizations, you know, unfortunately doing all this great work because there is such a huge need. Um, but the need needs to be done today. Um, shouldn't be done, you know, three, four, or five years from now. We need to start working on this today, and I think all of us agree that that is the case. Um, so I just want to thank you all. I encourage you to continue to be active, you know, in our community and in the city council, um, to be plugged in. Because again, you're so close to City Hall. Uh, there's no reason for, you know, not being part of us. And, you know, whether you came from South Los Angeles, um, or further down in Orange County, uh, you're part of the fabric of our city. So I, I don't, I wish we would have more folks from, from Baldwin Park that, that are able to take this opportunity. But sometimes state laws and laws prevent us from doing that. But that said, I also see the benefit of, you know, what we're doing as a whole, not only just for our cities, but, you know, not, not only for our residents, but also for all of California. That's the thing that we need to, you know, think about, is, you know, what are we doing for others, um, that give this opportunity, right? We know, as we took up the tiny village homes last week, or last meeting that we had, there are other cities that looked at that. They decided not to do that. Um, I can at least speak for myself and, you know, voted in favor of that. Because I believe that that's something that we need to be doing. Again, you know, we use this as an example of what can be done and what should be done. So with that, you know, um, thank you all for being here. Really appreciate the opportunity to, you know, meet with you, um, and know more about your stories and your, in your individual lives. Um, so I encourage you to, you know, contact me, uh, or, you know, stay around if, if possible, and we'll have those conversations. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Great, thank you. So, Ben, it was, uh, it was recommended by staff to not continue this project. So can you kind of explain why that recommendation was made?
Yes, Mayor and City Council, thank you. Um, to, to keep it brief, the, the Rome development, uh, Rome development, uh, was given an ENA. It, it, uh, expired in July 17th. It was a two-year ENA. The general reason we recommended, um, not to proceed with the project was due to the lack of progress. It's not to say that the developer could not have eventually completed the project and some progress had been made, but in, in my experience, it was slow. That was a general, um, that's my general comments, I can provide more specifics, but that's generally, um, the reason.
Great, thank you. And so I think the key word is eventually, right? And we, we've all just talked about how important it is that we ramp up our efforts. So eventually, isn't fast enough. You know, when we, when we talk about affordable housing, you know, and before I keep talking, you know, all, I, I commend all of you for coming up here. You know, eight months ago, I was there. And I had been coming to city council meetings for a very long time. I come from the same place as, as many of you. Working-class immigrant mother, undocumented, jumping from place to place. I too found stability here in Baldwin Park. When I was in fifth grade, I came here, I attended Central Elementary. And ever since then, I've been here. I've been a renter since then. So when I talk about renting and affordable housing, I mean it. Because I know what it's like. I've had to work two to three jobs. I've had to work overtime, 65 hours a week. And at the end of the day, I have nothing to show for it because it all goes to bills. I'm there with all of you. So, but when it comes to affordable housing, unfortunately, affordable housing has become such a vague term. But we don't know, because it's not just affordable. Now there's a moderately affordable, and there's low-income affordable, and very low-income affordable. You know, one of my biggest concerns is Rome is a for-profit company. How is a for-profit company in the business of affordable housing? If, if Rome was really invested in this project, they would have showed up when their item was on the agenda. We talk about the ENAs. They got a one-year ENA. They asked for an extension, they got a second-year extension. And they weren't able to ramp up their piece. Ben, how far did they get during the ENA process?
My, it's a, it's a difficult answer to, you know, explain, but I would say, uh, progress was made, but, um, it was still significantly away from being a project that was, um, fully negotiated, designed, laid out, and ready to, to proceed.
Great, thank you. So, you know, we're all looking to increase our affordable housing, but it doesn't mean that we just go with whatever option is thrown at us. As I said, the word affordable has become vague because everybody wants to jump into the affordable housing pot of money, so that they can get those funds. Ben, did we secure, uh, housing, housing vouchers for almost every single one of those proposed units?
Yes, the Housing Authority, the, the, the City Council acting as the Housing Authority, secured 114 project-based vouchers for this development.
And so how much, what's the value of one voucher?
Essentially, a project-based voucher, one voucher would pay the fair market rent, or essentially the fair market rent for one unit for the, for, in perpetuity, for the life of the project.
Right, and so did Rome go as far as actually securing capital to build this building? Or did they take advantage of the opportunity that the city provided, with the resources that the city provided, to lock in whatever grants, funding is needed to build a five-story, 120-unit building?
They were in the process of, of developing, uh, of, of obtaining other financing.
Towards the second, uh, towards the end of the second, of the, of the extension? So towards the end of the second year?
Yes.
So, you know, if you have an ENA here, I would, if you're really in on this project, I would have expected you to be here. When we had the Olson ENA, they showed up, they gave their presentation. I think they gave two presentations, right? They gave their presentation during open session and then they stayed for the regular meeting. So, you know, I, like I said, I'm with all of the renters, I'm with you. But it doesn't mean that we just say, go with whatever is thrown at us. You know, city, the city, the city wanted change, and that's what we're doing here. We're looking at every single alternative. So, there is a reason why we didn't extend this project. It's not that we don't want affordable housing, it's that the partner didn't make the effort. You all know the need, you, you just told us. So, if they couldn't get it done in two years, are they going to get it done in two more? Do we have to give them a third ENA? I mean, a third extension? A fourth extension? It's not just Phase Three, it's Phase Two. So, Ben, you have, you, they had two ENAs. Is that correct?
Yes.
And how far did they get on either?
Phase, Phase Three was what we call the project behind King Taco, that's the project we just discussed. Phase Two is the project where Urban X Store is located, immediately adjacent to Phase One. So that project, uh, basically very little to no progress was made on that project.
Great, thank you. So it's not just me making these things, it's me asking staff why we stopped this project. So, no talking, public communication is over. No, you, you emailed me, you did email me. My email doesn't stop you from working on this project. You weren't, you're the only company that was entitled to this land throughout this time. City gave vouchers, the city gave resources, the city is proposing, how many acres is that, two?
The property across the street is approximately two acres.
Two acres? So, nobody's saying that we don't want affordable housing here in Baldwin Park. I've been a proponent of affordable housing since I've been here. You know, and, and if my colleagues think I'm lying, I encourage them to call me out, because I've proposed affordable housing, uh, projects, and they get voted down by some people that support these projects. So it's not a matter of just thinking that because we don't support this project, it's not gonna, we don't, we don't support affordable housing. Where, th- this council has really prioritized putting housing, putting affordable housing over market rate. You look at the city in the past and how many market rate units have been built compared to how many affordable units have been built? Affordable units are a drop in the bucket. So, so those are my comments, I brought staff on so that they can answer these questions. Uh, Ben, so, did Rome meet all the, all their requirements, uh, based on the contract? Did they provide you bi-monthly status reports?
No.
Uh, did they, within 60 days after the effective date, developer shall submit to a city a pro forma showing the fiscal feasibility for its proposed development? Did they give it to you within 60 days?
Uh, no.
Within 90 days after the start date, developer shall submit to a city a market feasibility study for its proposed development, including a residential housing and neighborhood retail-specific market study, and residential housing and neighborhood retail marketing strategy. Did they do that?
No.
Okay. Within 120 days, developer shall submit reasonable satisfactory evidence to city, including the financing structure demonstrating developer can and will obtain the necessary debt and equity financing in an amount sufficient to pay for acquisition and development of the project site. Did they do that within 120 days?
No.
Submit a review of conceptual phasing plans. Within 150 days, developer shall submit to city conceptual plans for the development of the entire site. City staff shall review and comment on the conceptual plans. Ben, did they do that?
I believe they did that, but I'm not sure of the exact timing if it was...
All right, one out of five. City's right to additional information, city reserves the right during the term of the CNA to request reasonable additional information and data from developer. It seems a, a pretty vague one, but they offer to always give you additional information?
Pardon me, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Are they open to always giving you additional information?
Provide additional information?
Yes.
Um, I'd say generally, yes.
Okay, so it seems that Rome, from the start, didn't do their part. Because if this is true, not if this is true, you broke the contract, you didn't do, you didn't do your due diligence. Right? Right? No, I'm just saying, right?
No, uh...
No, no talking. Okay, it's public communication, there's no talking. Uh, uh, no.
Well, Mayor, you're asking him questions.
No, I'm just saying, right, I said, right.
Do you want him to answer the question?
Monica, I understand that you took, you, you, I understand that you, Manuel Lozano, and the rest of the people here took $10,000 from their management company. And I understand that you're invested in this, but this is not what it's about.
I'm not invested, come on.
This is why you brought it up.
I'm saying, you're asking him questions.
No, I'm not asking him a question, I just said, right.
Okay, that's fine.
So, look.
Then don't ask him questions.
So, you know, it's interesting, you know? It's interesting that today, all the, on the actual ENA, nobody showed up. Today, the full, the full Rome staff, I'm not talking to you, the full Rome staff is here today. City, uh, Rome staff knows when to start recording, when all these people show up and start talking. You know, uh, and the same day that Councilmember Garcia brings it up for the ENA. You know, I read of the contract, you didn't do your portion, you didn't do your due diligence, you weren't a reliable partner. And that's it for that. So I don't know if any of the council members have any questions, concerns?
Yes.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you, actually, um, Mayor Potem hasn't spoken, so if you want to speak and then I'll, I'll.
Thank you.
Thank you though.
First of all, I wanna, I want to thank all the speakers that are here. And as the mayor say, I, I understand what you mean when you say affordable housing is important. It definitely is. Uh, as you all know, the house, the, the homeless population is growing. I know a lot of families that have become homeless because they can't afford housing. Because this project was not approved, it does not mean that we do not want affordable housing. I, like the mayor, also am very interested in affordable housing. This developer was not responsible in following the guidelines and following the contract. To be able to produce the hundred and twenty unit. Affordable housing that they proposed. So what we need to do is look for a developer that's responsible, that really understands how important it is to get affordable housing in our community. And that we need to get it done as soon as possible. This project started, well, it was the E&amp;A, and in case you don't know what the E&amp;A stands for. It's an exclusive negotiating agreement. And that means Rome were the only ones that can negotiate with that property. No other developer could come in and propose projects for that particular property. Because they were giving that negotiation agreement, which is fine, that's very normal. But when somebody is giving an agreement this way, they have to abide and they have to follow what they're promising. They didn't follow the timelines, they didn't turn in what they had to turn in. And here we are, twenty twenty-one, two years later. They still didn't present the documents that the mayor asked Benjamin to see if they presented them. Having said that, again, just because that project was not approved, we have been discussing land, looking at different properties. The mayor around, drives around or rides around in his bicycle locating properties where we can locate and put more affordable housing. Market rate housing, there's a lot here. But we need affordable housing, but we need a developer that's responsible. And that really means well for our community, that will really move fast enough. Because like you all said, we need affordable housing quick. To develop these properties, and I know it takes a long time, there's a lot of work involved. But in this two-year process, there's a lot of items still missing. And we can't sit here and wait to see in the next year, are they going to turn in what it's required? Are we going to be sitting on that land for another year? Or are we going to look for other developers? Or maybe if they find another land and fi- and develop another property that they can move quicker? They need to understand the needs of our community. And we need to bring the affordable housing, absolutely. But we also need to, a timeline that they need to keep. And if they made a promise and they sign a contract and they're not keeping it, then we need to look elsewhere. We have Habitat for Humanity, as you all heard. It's not just about renting affordably, but purchasing, purchasing affordably. And I know a lot of times we can't just go directly and purchase because we need to build up our credit and we need to do a lot of things before we can purchase a home. However, we're looking into both, we're looking into being able to give you the opportunity to purchase a home regardless of your income. And we're also looking at other land, we also have uh, other, we have the Sessos Chavez Foundation. Correct, Ben? How many properties are we, how many affordable housing units there?
Fifty-three.
Fifty-three. We have the Retiring Housing Foundation with another, another fifty-five affordable senior housing that's being developed. And like I said, we're looking for other land in Baldwin Park to provide more affordable housing with a developer. That's responsible, that's going to move forward and not keep asking for extension after extension. We need to build affordable housing, but we need somebody responsible here. And I'm not saying that, that that project is not a nice project, and I'm not saying that they didn't provide good housing for you. I'm glad that you're there and I'm glad that you were able to get that housing. But they're moving at snail pace and we can't have that. We need to look elsewhere, if they weren't able to provide for us what our community needed, then we need to look elsewhere. Thank you, mayor.
Mayor.
Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. So, yeah, since we're talking about phase two and phase three, um, the reason why I did add it to the agenda is because at the last council meeting, uh, we were. You know, it was, it was, the focus was on an entirely different subject. We took up the item after midnight and I really did believe that this item deserved more time and discussion. But I'm glad that we are discussing it, thank you. Um, I've worked for a real estate development company. Uh, in the past, I've been a planning deputy in the city of Los Angeles. Uh, I've been a council member for fourteen years now. And it's not unusual for ENAs to be extended. Because there is a lot of due diligence that usually happens within that structure, within that framework. And it often, you know, results in extension. Correct me if I'm wrong, Ben Martinez. Is it, is it unusual for an E&amp;A to be extended?
No.
Okay. The reason for it is because when you're dealing with different property owners, um, there can be challenges. There can be negotiation issues, uh, you know, think about when you're buying a home. The process, the escrow, the issues that can come, that can arise. So through an exclusive negotiating agreement, it gives the parties, the interested parties, the opportunity to have conversations. To start to put the pieces together of that project. I don't think it's unusual even to see an E&amp;A go eighteen to twenty-four months. Because of market conditions and things like that. I mean, if I look at a neighboring city in the city of Covina, I remember them telling me that they were negotiating with the developer for years. So I hear what you're saying about us wanting to move forward and uh, I wanted to see if we could get a presentation from Rome. If we're all in agreement just to hear, I feel like the information has really been one way, but we really haven't heard from Rome. About what they've been doing in this timeframe and why they were asking for an extension. Because you also have to remember that we just went through COVID. And so, you know, COVID put a, uh, we, what, what is it called, the year that was lost? So I would be curious, you know, I would really love to hear just for a full presentation, just so that we have all the, as much factual information versus, you know, kind of. Coming to our own determinations. Um, because what is happening here with the E&amp;A extension, it's actually not unusual. So, we also have a developer that has proven that they can complete a beautiful project that has great benefit to. A little community and to our larger community. And so, given the track record, you know, um, this is why I thought it was worth having the conversation. Uh, because they did build a beautiful project, I'm very proud of it. And, um, you know, I, I'm, I'm so glad that I was able as a council member to make that available. To families and to individuals like what, who, the people that we've heard here today. And I know that we want to do that moving forward. So, I would like to, you know, I mean, if, if, given, since we have Rome here tonight. Can they provide us with some of that reasoning, some of the, you know, in three minutes perhaps? To answer some of the questions that we have here. But, um, you know, before we, before we do that, I do want to say that from my own knowledge, phase two. Uh, whi- which involves the Tajo tacos Mexico. That's been a real challenge because it's privately owned and we don't have any willing sellers from what I've understood. This has been an ongoing, you know, this is a known factor for a couple of years. Um, so that really leads us, I think, to phase three, um, as a more viable project. But if we can, since we have Stephen Amami here, can we go ahead and bring him up for three minutes so that he can provide some of that information?
You know, like I, like I said, you know, their, their item was on the agenda on two weeks ago and they didn't bother to show up. This isn't about an extension. If somebody's working diligently on the project, I don't mind the extensions. Uh, Ben, when was this, when was the first E&amp;A started? What year?
The E&amp;A was approved on July seventeenth, two thousand nineteen.
So there was no COVID in two thousand and nineteen. So, again, we've gone over the, the, the points in the contract and they didn't even meet half of those. At least from what I've counted, if Ben is telling the truth, right, if. If, so if. We'll keep it subjective. That's gonna change the story. You know, but, so how, how am I gonna sit here? You've gotten two years, you didn't get what you were supposed to get done in the first year on time, like the contract stated that you would. You've gotten a second year, you still didn't move at a faster pace. COVID wasn't around your first year, so that's not an excuse. So, like, and as I said, it was, they were, they had the opportunity to show up when the item was on the agenda. I have no problem staying here late and we all know that. We're on a stipend, I have no problems making that stipend stretch for the, for the, for, for city, for city hall. Now. You know, so it's not a matter of explaining. Contractual obligations are failed, contractual obligations are failed, there's no way around that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yeah, so.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, uh, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you, I just wanted, I didn't want to interrupt you, that's why I was asking. Thank you, appreciate that. Um, first and foremost, I think there is a lot of misinformation that's going on right now, Mr. Mayor. Just truthfully, I don't feel comfortable with, you know, what, what, what's being, uh, stated. Uh, you know, I would ask, uh, Ben, um, you know, this is, this is, this is, this is an ask. Uh, I would like to see all the emails and all the communications that we have between us, the city. And with Rome to actually understand exactly, you know, what it is that we're, what we were asking them, right? And what is it that we change, right? Because one of the things in regards to phase two is because that particular property is privately owned. The only way for us to move forward on that process is if the city, one, if they sold, right? That, two, they didn't do that, uh, those individuals didn't want to sell. Three, the city, if we were asking them to move forward on that, that would require that the city do eminent domain on that property. So in that relationship, I like to know, just for my own clarity, for, for full transparency as we move through this, right? Because I just want to make sure that the full facts are, you know, are spoken directly. And, you know, making decisions, uh, at twelve-thirty at night, it's not my cup of st- it's not my style to do that. And I know it's nobody else's, right? So that's why, you know, I would ask if, if it's okay, um, for us to, you know, perhaps just bring this information that, you know, that, that I'm asking for Ben to bring. Um, so we can do that and, you know, uh, if the council allows to have, uh, Rome provide. Uh, any facts and so forth in regards to that discussion. Uh, because right now, you know, Ben, you're a good person, I, you know, I trust you. Uh, but I still just, I need to see the facts, right? And I don't have the emails, I don't have this information, uh, in front of us, it hasn't been presented to any council members. Uh, and, you know, I've, I've heard things and, you know, just because I hear things, I'm not gonna act on them. Um, until I get the, the actual facts in the court, you know, uh, correspondence between us and Rome. Um, so that way, should this move forward, great, should it not, then that's fine, it stands on the basis of the facts and that's all I ask, so.
And that's fine, I appreciate that. You know, that's why I didn't, I asked Ben, Ben is the one that's in charge of this, so I relied on his answers. Staff recommended not to, um, not extend it. I relied on staff to make that decision, they work here twenty-four, uh, not twenty-four seven, but they act like it, which is good, you know. I, I appreciate that, but they work here long hours and they're the ones working on these projects. You know, as a, for twelve-thirty, you know, we're city leaders, there's five of us, you know, we are here to act at any time of day. So, you know, just putting that out there. If it takes till one in the morning to finish this meeting, that's what we're gonna do. Um, but other than that, so I think at this point, um, Mayor Potem, you can make your last comment, but this is starting to impose on, on potential closed session items.
I just have a quick question again. Just really quick, Ben. Did they report any progress to you, any problems they were running into at any given time?
Not, not that I recall, I mean, we've had a lot of conversations, the project progress, it, 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 it happened substantially. But no, I don't recall right now at this moment, problems that they ran into.
Right, and to make it short, because this discussion has gone long enough. So the project, um, the E&amp;A was given July seventeen, twenty nineteen, that was the whole year. COVID didn't start until March twenty twenty, so from July twenty nineteen to March twenty twenty, they still almost had another year there and, and nothing was done. In March, in April of twenty twenty, they asked for the extension and yes, it was COVID then, but they had all that time, almost two years prior to that. And there was no, uh, no progress, no reports, no updates to you given. So no, I am not comfortable with bringing this back and getting more information. It's very clear, they didn't follow the progress, they didn't follow, um, what they signed up for and no, I'm not comfortable with bringing them back, thank you.
And mayor, if I, if I may, just to wrap this up, um, I do want to say that I know they were working on renderings and, and the first phase, Metro Village. That project took about two or three years. Uh, why? Because they engaged a lot with the city council, we provided a lot of direction on what we wanted at that specific site. They actually changed the project in response to our comments. And I know that Rome was reaching out to us in trying to do the same thing. Um, I know that I received renderings and I responded and said, you know, this isn't, uh, what I envisioned. And so, you know, it'd be more along the lines of Art Deco, I mean, we had specific conversations around details of the project. I know that as, um, Ben stated, we had awarded these vouchers and they, Rome was leveraging those vouchers for state funding as well. Um, so they were in, they're in the middle of that. For phase one, Metro Village, I think that alone took a couple of years, like a couple of cycles. Uh, one cycle, the state didn't issue all the funding that was needed. And so it was in the second cycle that they were able to draw down the affordable funds. So, you know, I, I think that if you are concerned about the timeframe of this project, just know, it's actually not. It's not atypical of, you know, what, one of these, uh, projects, like the senior development project that, you know, is being proposed. Um, that's already been in the works for over a year. It's not unusual, it takes two to three years to get a project up and running, to engage with the council. For the council to provide direction, to provide leadership and, um, you know, make the best project possible. And I know that Rome was trying to do that, um. So I think we'll just leave it there, but, you know, it would have been, I think, for all the efforts and the investment, it would have been nice to. Have them speak and, and address some of our concerns at least tonight. Because for all the time that they have spent on this, um, you know, I think that that would have been a courtesy. Um, not to mention the quality of project and the lives that have been impacted. So, uh, you know, that, and that means so much more to me than the specifics of an E&amp;A and the, and the details and, um, you know, these are, like I said. Phase one, the reason why I feel so strongly about this is phase one had one thousand applications and only seventy of those were filled. So the need is there and, um, you know, I just want the community to know that. I, I've supported, you know, I wish that we could get a, a second building at minimum, like Metro Village. And, and occupy it with families, you know, from our community that could really benefit. Um, you know, my support is there to continue with that project. I know that Councilmember Hernandez also, for you, that you were supportive of the project. Um, so for what it's worth, you know, we'll just, we'll leave it there.
Sure.
Mayor, sorry, one more thing, and, and she said a key word, Monica said a key word, the courtesy, yes. We were not afforded the courtesy with updates, we were not afforded the courtesy of. Them being responsible and giving us the information that we needed and all the updates. So you're right, there was no courtesy there on their part on making. on their part, on making sure that we understood. There was no communication so that we would know where we were with the project or where they were. I didn't see renderings. I didn't see anything. I had no updates. So you're right. No courtesy from their part, and my, that's what I mean.
Okay, so that's it. Last comment. You know, I have no problem making up for these one hundred and twenty lost units. So I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion. Ben, how much money do we have for housing funds? I think, I believe you said over ten million.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, what was the question?
So I'd like to make a motion to direct staff. Ben, how much money do we have in our, in our, in our, in our housing funds?
Uh, 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 more than ten million dollars for.
So why don't we do this? Why don't we make a motion to direct staff to challenge, to, to, to find a way to challenge themselves? Find a way to create a hundred and twenty affordable homeownership units by next year to make up for these lost rented units. And that's a motion. Can I get a second? Any objections? It's not a concept. I'm directing staff to find out how we can leverage all of our money to make up for these lost one hundred and twenty rented units with a hundred and twenty homeownership units. And there's a second. Is there an objection? You object? Okay, so this isn't about housing. City Clerk, roll call please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. Don't, don't actually start speaking for me. No, wait, I'm sorry, Mr., Mr. Mayor.
No, go ahead.
I don't know. I have clarification, because again, just doing a blanket statement like that is unfair. So I, I, I'm sorry you, you're finding this funny.
Okay.
I mean, what's so funny about it?
That you're making, you're, you're trying to play this.
You just made a motion. I said no.
Okay, City Clerk, roll call.
You are adding to it your own opinion.
There's a motion.
Let's make sure you get that right. All right?
Okay, City, okay, Benjamin, please.
I just want clarification.
There is a motion to direct city staff to make up, to find a way to make up for these one hundred and twenty lost rented units by leveraging our funds to allocate enough land and current housing stock to create a hundred and twenty home, affordable homeownership units. And I think that makes up for more than the fact of these lost rented units. And that's a motion. Can I get a second?
Okay, well, Mayor, really quick.
I know, but there's a motion in place now.
Is that rea-, is that realistic?
It is. I think it is.
Can we ask our staff? They're, they're, look.
I'm not telling them to do it. I'm telling them to look into it.
Okay, oh, look into it or have it built?
Well, let's look into it. Let's, let's really challenge ourselves, because we've all expressed how important affordable housing is.
So why do we need to make a motion? Just.
We're directing staff.
He's directing staff.
So, okay, okay.
Okay, so City Clerk.
What we understood, what I understood was that you wanted it built by next year.
Oh, I said we can do allocations, and we had allocations as well.
You said to replace.
So, no. Okay, so.
But can you, can you correct your?
How, how about this? It'll, it'll be a lot faster than your project, I'll tell you that. City, stop, stop. I'm the chair, stop. City staff, a motion to allocate six million dollars towards homeownership opportunities. And that's a motion. Can I get a second? Any objections? No objections? Benjamin, you have clear direction to allocate six million dollars and look for affordable homeownership opportunities to bring back.
Which is what we talked about earlier, right?
Yeah, so we're making up for those lost units. Okay, so at this moment, we'll call a ten-minute recess.
Good job, Monica. Good job, Paul.
Up there, I'm ashamed of you. Good job.
Very well spoken.
Have a blessed evening.
Good to see you, Director Vargas. Thank you for being here this evening, like always.
I'm here.
I'm here.
That's.
I'm here.
I'm like, oh, my goodness.
Oh, yeah.
I'm here.
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 I got another fact, right?
I'm here.
I'm here.
I'm here.
Oh, man, that was a beyond-needed bathroom break.
No, I'm still good from lunch.
What did we eat?
Uh, Sizzler, dude. I told you that plate of food was freaking huge. So, yeah, I'm still good.
I'm better than you.
Still good. It was good. I'm, I'm shocked how, how good it was.
I used to go to that Sizzler all the time. Where'd you go?
Sizzler.
Where?
Sizzler. Yeah, you know, there, there's two things I learned today. There's uh one in West Covina, and then there's a um, uh, also a Panera right next to it in West Covina. I never, we never go to that Panera. Johnny, look at Johnny. Want to text Johnny?
Turn off this Sizzler.
Oh, yeah.
That's the beach ball.
I'm sending you that.
Eating the merk.
It's not hot, man.
All right, I'm a big boy.
You're handling me like a bitch.
So at this point, we're coming back from our recess. So at this point, we're back on city council meeting. Um, you know, it's, it's a, it's obviously a, a hard issue to talk about. It's very passionate from both sides. Um, at this point, it's not on the agenda, and it's time to move on. So moving on to our consent calendar, are there any items council is wishing to pull? And we do have somebody here for item number four, who is able to answer any questions if we have any. If you're, if you're looking to pull it. So any other items city council is looking to pull? Okay, so at this moment, I will make a motion to pass items one, one through eight, and that excludes item number five. Uh, can I get a second? Any objections? No? Ten calendars are passed except for item number five, and now, uh, Mayor Potem, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So item number five is a selection of an audit firm to provide independent professional annual audit services. Um, how do we select this specific audit firm? Hello.
Hi, Mayor Potem. Uh, we, uh, previously with city council's uh direction, we sent out R F P to six auditing firm, and three of the auditing firm responded to the city's R F P. All three auditing firms have the similar. All three auditing firms have the similar qualifications and lots of experience, over ten years experiences. With government auditing. And they all have the similar qualification. And based on the proposed price. A.D. Bailey came out with the lowest bid. With about fifteen nine thousand dollar annually audit fee. And they also provided the city's fixed rate for the next three years. And this will provide the city about ten thousand dollar savings annually. And that's one of the most recent that staff recommended. To select this auditing firm. And the auditing partner is also online and waiting. For any questions that the city council may have.
So a question I have is, is there like a rating for these auditing firms? I know the price is lower, I see that. But how are they rated when it comes to their auditing services?
And it is based on. It's based on their years of experience and. Qualified staff they have. And numbers of government, city government that or government agency they have been audited.
Do you know if they audit any of our surrounding cities?
Hi David, are you available to answer this question?
Hi, good evening, council members. My name is David Showalter with AID Bailey. Thank you for having us here today. Yeah, we audit quite a few other cities in the area. We've been established in California for over seventy years as our former firm under Vabernik Tryon Bay. And merged in with AID Bailey two years ago. We've got eleven offices in California and we audit over four hundred governmental agencies in California and across the farm.
Sorry David, could you please speak little bit louder?
We audit over six hundred governmental agencies in our firm, many of which are entities such as yourself, cities. Other agencies that I audit in the area, we audit City of Glendale, we've audited Walnut. You know, just Temple City is one of our clients, which is pretty close by. Whittier, City of Whittier is one of my other clients that I audit as well. You know, my, my experience is City of Sacramento, City of Dale. City of Concord up north, Walnut Creek. Quite a few different cities that I've had an opportunity to work with, very similar to City of Baldwin Park, so. We've been, I've been conducting audits of cities and government agencies for over twenty years, so. So my resume is of the proposal and feel like we're highly qualified to take on the audit of the, of the City of Baldwin Park, so.
Thank you, those were all the questions. I just didn't know how you made this choice and I wanted to hear more about what they were about in their experience. Thank you.
Thank you. As I mentioned, all three auditing firms, they all have over ten years experience. They are all well qualified auditing firms.
I know, I don't have a problem with this auditing firm, but I know council member Damian asked for them. Asked for an auditing firm and I know he did his work on it, but I wanted to have my, I wanted to have questions on my own, so. I'm pretty satisfied, so with that, I want to make a motion to pass item number five.
I'll second. Is there any objections? Item five passes. And now we move on to city council acting as successor agency of the dissolved community development commission. There is a consent calendar and I will make a motion to pass that consent calendar. Can I get a second? Any objections? Not consent calendar passes, and I believe we have a public hearing and that is on update of the city of Baldwin Park. And Baldwin Park fee schedule based on consumer price index and other adjustments. So at this moment, I will formally open the public hearing for anybody looking to speak in favor of item number nine. Is there anybody looking to speak in favor of item number nine? If not, at this moment, I will move to close public hearing for, in favor, and I will move to open public hearing against item number nine. Is there anybody looking to speak against? Item number nine. If not. I move to close the public hearing for opposing item number nine. City council, is there any questions or comments regarding this item? Or is there a presentation by staff?
I would like to briefly talk about this little bit. And thus, thus they allow cities to recover or a portion of the cost. Of providing exchange basis services through application of fee. Annually, a city updated why fee schedule is recommended to maintain appropriate recovery ratio of the services cost. And the Los Angeles area annual May twenty twenty one CPI was up three point nine percent. However, with the impact of the COVID. The city wants to support and assist the local business. So this time, we remain most of the fees that we did not make any changes. Such as the business license fee, we remain the same as prior years. And also all the recreation service fees remain the same. We only have a very small increase in fees related to construction permits, contract fees. And other than that, most of the fees are remain the same. We have a small increase in one area regarding the jail services. And it was recommended by the chief and based on their research from the surrounding cities or surrounding area. And that's all the comments I have. I welcome any questions from the city council. I just want to mention to the public that most of the fees have remained the same as prior years.
Mayor?
Yes, council, Mayor Protem.
What was the increase for construction?
It's very small percentage and two percent or.
Is that for the permits and everything that has to do for construction?
Most of the permit fee and stay the same. We only have a small change under the building permit for the cannabis facilities.
That's the only one?
For example, it's about four cents per, per square foot.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Is there any other questions or concerns from? Council members? So, just to clarify, it seems like we're doing this to increase the, for, for police really, right?
Police chief can comment on that.
Yes, it's, if I recall correctly, it's for pay to stay, but we increasing the rate for pay to stay, which we are very successful at.
Great, yeah, I forgot the name, but pay to stay, that's what it is. Okay. Well, at this moment, I will make a motion to pass item number nine. Can I get a second? Any objections? Not? Item nine passes, and now we move on to reports of officers. And there's item ten, approval of agreements for communications and social media services. I know we, I know we brought this, I know we moved it over last, last meeting. But I think, you know, during this time, we've all been kind of focused on ARP funding and, and other, and other issues that are, that are time sensitive. You know, I'd like to wait till council member Damian comes back. I know that, I believe he was the one that made this request. Was that true or was it you, Mayor Protem?
Request to, to move it because yes, I haven't really had time to look at, at the, at the firms.
Right, okay, so at this moment, I'll make a motion to, to move item number ten over to the next city council meeting. Any objections? Not? Item number ten is moved over. And then request for direction on a proposed ordinance prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco products. City attorney, can you? Chime in on this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The council gave direction to, for the city attorney's office to look at drafting a proposed ordinance prohibiting the sale of flavored tobacco products here in the city of Baldwin Park. The city attorney's office looked at a number of other cities, including, as I recall, Alhambra, South Almonte, Almonte. The board of supervisors has an ordinance regarding this as well. And we also looked at state, state law as well. While looking at all of those ordinances, we drafted one for the city of Baldwin Park. It's very inclusive. It is essentially bans all flavored tobacco products in any form, which would. Include, I did not include cannabis at the time, but we have received some comments from. As I recall, it was one of the lawyers for a nonprofit organization that made some suggestions. And I think part of his suggestions were that we ban flavored products as it relates to cannabis as well. Yes, so that was Jamie Long, staff attorney from the Public Health Law Center. And so what we, what we need now, mayor, is just direction on if, if there are any changes that the city council would want. Or whether you would like us to go and finalize this ordinance. In, after speaking with our staff attorney, the staff attorney from the Public Health Center, I'll reach out to him. And bring back a final ordinance for your further review.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Yes, council member Hernandez.
Thank you. Again, Robert, thank you very much for doing the due diligence of creating this ordinance. You know, this is a group that at least I can speak to personally, been working with, you know, for the last almost year, year and a half maybe, I think, at this point. You know, what I really appreciate more of this process that this is actually a community driven ordinance. This is not necessarily something that the council came up with per se. This is something that's being driven through our youth and other community members. And it makes sense, you know, based on what they've done. Given the track changes that they've provided, I think they just gave it to us today, maybe in the afternoon, close to two thirty. My suggestion would be for staff slash Robert or others to circle back with Mr. Long. The attorney for the Public Health Law Center to really understand the, the difference in languages, right? As to, you know, why, why they made the changes and so forth. So that way, you know, when it comes back to us, maybe the next time, we can do two things. One is get a brief in regards to the changes and the items that, you know, that they're suggesting. And what's, Robert is suggesting that we, you know, continue to move forward or keep. And then at that point, you know, we can perhaps have the first reading of the ordinance at, at the, at that meeting. But at this point, you know, given, given the, the short notice that they provided. And it's not nobody's fault, but just a short notice that we've had in regards to this, this will give us a little bit of time. For all of us just to look at it and to make sure that if it's, you know, the needs, we have the track change item. So, you know, between now and then, we can certainly circle back with our staff to slash Robert. To add anything or, or change anything or ask questions for him as he does his due diligence. But really, I think what this will do is create a much healthier community for our, for our residents, but also for the young adults. That are, you know, using flavored tobacco products. You know, that's, has been shown time after time with the studies that that does lead to smoking. And, you know, we're trying to create a healthy community. And, you know, I think we have some good vendors in our city, but we also have some vendors that might need a little bit of encouragement and, you know, understand. You know, what it means, what the type of product that they're selling is impacting our community. And we want to make sure that we're due diligence in making sure that the product that individuals already have. That they could, you know, get rid of or sell over a period of time, so there's some sort of a. You know, sunset clause that allows them to continue to sell the products. But of course not to the youth, but be able to work towards that so they could, you know, get rid of their inventory, but more importantly. Make them aware that, that the flavored tobacco products will be prohibited. Should they move forward after the ordinance, you know, thirty plus days after the ordinance moves forward and so forth. Those are my comments. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
So it sounds like we're moving this over the next city council meeting, is that correct?
That would be my motion if, if everyone's okay with what I just mentioned?
Yeah, I'll second that. I think it's. You know, when it comes to ordinances and things like this, you know, obviously, we want to take into consideration, you know, the input from. Recognizable facilities and organizations and of course, because it's an ordinance and we're putting a, you know, an ordinance in place in the city. I'd like for the full council to be here and, and be able to discuss it further and vote on it. So I believe that brings us to the end of that agenda. So at this moment, I. Yeah, I have the, don't worry.
I'm sorry, before you, you adjourn the meeting, I. I'm sorry?
The housing authority? Oh, I'm going to the housing authority. Did you have a comment?
I have something, a letter that I like to read. Under the city council, city clerk, city treasurer, staff requests and communications.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. I received a, a letter from a resident and I wanted to read it to the council. She writes, I would like to wish all of you a nice summer. Being a resident in Baldwin Park for more than forty years, I love our city and the people in there. They're honest, hardworking, kind, nice. But since pandemic, people changed, people changed. The streets of the city are dirty, plenty of dogs, dogs poo. And please send someone to remind all dog owners who walk dogs outside should have a plastic bag with them to pick up their dog's poo. Just a friendly reminder the first time, then give them a fine later. You should post signs on the streets around schools environments, especially at Bersh School. She says, three sites are plenty of dogs poo. My grandchildren are very upset to step on them. Our neighbors' front yards were invaded by gophers since twenty twenty, so that results in dirty front yards. And this is a bad situation. She does give an address, I'm not going to read it out. But she does say that we hope and wish that the city will do anything to improve these situations. Thank you very much. Best regards, sincerely ML. Then she writes, PS, please open the seniors pool. We appreciate the swimming pool helps the old people a lot, more than you could imagine. From arthritis, from heart disease, from obesity, from diabetes, from cholesterol, from high blood pressure, from dot, 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 dying at early age. Please hear our hopes and our wishes.
Thank you. And then could you forward me her contact information?
Well, she. She didn't, she didn't provide a return address. But I'll, I'll share a copy of this with you.
Okay, thank you.
And you know, that's a great idea to require residents to carry bags because she's right. I have seen people. I mean, they do it at my house. Since I don't have a gate, they let the hot dog walk in and do their thing and they walk away. My mom tells me, I'm going to go out there and tell them something. I tell them, no, don't say, don't walk out, but it's true. We need to make sure our residents are responsible. I love dogs. We all love dogs, most of us. And, but we have to be responsible and take care of our neighborhood. So that is a great idea that she has there. So yes, let's reach out to her and let's see what we could do with that.
Yeah, of course.
Maybe an ordinance or something?
Yeah, and I think there might be, I don't know, Ben, with code enforcement, you know, is there anything in place regarding, you know?
That's a great idea.
Going to the restroom and, and public or private property?
I can look into that, mayor.
Thank you. Can you, can you look into that and then bring it back and, you know, if we can get ahold of her and communicate with her that we're, that we heard it and that we're going to figure something out, that'd be great.
We can definitely give away more doggy bags through our stormwater program. Sam, using stormwater funding and give away doggy bags to the residents.
That'd be nice. A lot of people walk their dogs around schools because they have that, I know I walk my dogs around Santa Fe and the other school there. And I always carry my bags with me, but, and residents who live in that area, I've seen they put up signs stating, please pick up your dog's poo. And so I always carry my bags, so it's not me. But yeah, maybe around, where we see them walk their dogs quite a bit, maybe put bag holders around there.
When it, when it comes to water and sanitation, Enrique always has, always has the best ideas, you know. Yeah, we're gonna, so.
And then maybe once we get that dog park, you know, the problem.
Oh, we could do like a, a grand opening or something, right? That'd be nice. Yeah, okay. Yeah, we, we should definitely look into that, you know, how we can do like a little event or provide our residents with some bags.
Doggy bag giveaways.
Yeah, and then of course, the senior center, I, I guess it was, Manny, is it still closed? It's closed because of a, well, first it was because of Kaiser, right? They were there using the whole site. And then I guess now it's regarding the, the guidelines and.
Yes, in, in regard to the guidelines. In addition, Mr. Mayor, we are, we're also hiring staff to administer that program. We have a soft opening of October first.
Oh, that's interesting. That's nice. I know some of the, some of the seniors always reach out. I've gotten a couple of letters, and then some people, you know, send me messages, and they're, they're all excited to go back to the, to this, to the senior center, and a lot of them specifically mentioned the pool.
Yes.
Very nice. Okay. So at this point, we're calling to order the Baldwin Park Housing Authority regular meeting. And I believe we have a consent calendar. Are there any items anybody is looking to pull from consent calendar for the Housing Authority? Okay, great. So at this moment, I will make a, I will make a motion to pass consent calendar. Can I get a second? Any objections? No. At this point, I move to adjourn the Housing Authority regular meeting. And I call to order the Baldwin Park Finance Authority regular meeting. And there is one calendar here, and that's the Treasurers' report for May two, twenty twenty-one. And I will make a motion to pass item number one. Can I get a second? Any objections? Not. Item passes, and I move to adjourn the Finance Authority regular meeting. Great. So at this point, we are done with our, our business. So I believe we're gonna, are we resetting to the closed session? So at this moment, we will recess to the closed session. Thank you, everybody. Good night. Thank you for being here. Yeah. So then Chief, Chief, if you can join us.